You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
Okay, welcome. We'll call the Board of Selectmen's VAE for April 17th, 2024 to order. I don't want to consider and if appropriate approve the Board of Selectmen's minutes of March 20th, 2024, and April 10th, 2024, which was a special meeting.
So moved?
Second.
All right, remove second. Hearing any corrections, edits? Hearing not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, item carries. Item two, to consider and if appropriate appoint James Finch Finance Director as a liaison to handle all neighborhood assistant act matters.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Move second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, item carries. Item three, to consider and if appropriate appoint Lino Turelli as Doc Master for the 2024 voting season.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Move second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, item carries. Appointments, Flood and Erosion Control Board, John Luss, term to expire April 30th, 2028?
Most to approve.
Second.
Move second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, item carries. Youngstown Commission, Robert Dayhill, term to expire April 30th, 2027.
Most to approve.
Second.
Move second. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, item carries. Item five, Green Use, to consider and if appropriate approve the request from Tabor Blues Band for the use of the town green June 1st, July 6th, August 3rd, 2024, from 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM to hold a blues jam.
Most to approve.
Second.
Move second. Discussion, hearing not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, item carries. To consider and if appropriate approve request from Shoreline Community Church for the use of the town green on July 16th, 2024, from 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM to hold a church concert.
Most to approve.
Second.
Move second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, item carries. Item six, to consider and if appropriate approve request from Stony Creek Association for the use of Bayview Park on September 7th, 2024, from 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM to hold Stony Creek Day activities.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move second. Discussion, hearing not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, item carries. Item seven, Correspondence. Do we have any correspondence? Maybe we do. Item eight, any other business? Sir, you have to come up here.
Yes, my name is Carl Dawson speaking. I just want to come back to see with any, any progress on the flooding of the bridge of Waverly Park Road. Nothing. They could put a storm. It seems to be a lot of water in that area when it rains a lot. You can't do anything about that, but maybe a storm drain or something? I'm, I'm not an engineer, but I don't know if they had a chance to go and look at it yet.
Yeah, we know it's a, that, that area takes a lot of water, the watershed area that comes through there, and in particular during storm events, which we have, when there's, you know, high tide events, the water has nowhere to go. And it does get trapped in there and it takes a, a while for it to go out. We are aware, as I said, that was one of the areas that was identified through a town's previous studies that we've done. Townwide studies has, you know, our coastal resiliency plans identified that area as area subject to flooding, particularly not only storm events, but even through sea level rise. You know, you may recall a number of years ago, we looked to actually begin to acquire properties along that. That area is unique in the fact that it has probably 19 homes that fall below the coastal jurisdiction line. So they're really right there up against the water. However, unfortunately, that did not receive their support through the appropriating bodies. So we were not, not only did not go through that acquisition, but we, it kind of hindered any other acquisitions from moving forward at that time. But it is something that the town is aware of. It is a problematic area due to both, as I said, storm and sea level rise. It's, it's vulnerable, I should say. But there is no current mitigation or plan in place to address this specific issue that you are discussing right now.
Maybe, maybe further down the road there, look at it and try to correct it, or no?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think there's, it's, it's, like I said, identified what is the correct measure, right? There's, there's three, three things that you can do. You could kind of, you know, try to harden the area, make it more resilient and, and keep the water out, but it's coming from so many areas depending on the type of storm event. It's either coming over, as you, I'm sure you're well aware, either over Limewood, it's coming from the Tabor area, as well as, you know, the eventually it can even top over Sybil Creek, you know, or the Sybil Creek Bridge. So it is vulnerable to act truly protect that area that, you know, there may be a, they would have to look at a cost benefit analysis. The other remedy that, you know, I, I mentioned just previously was perhaps some of those properties, you know, would be acquired if the homeowners were, were, were interested in pursuing that. And what that would do in the point I made last time, that then, you know, you are able to gain some real estate outside of that truly vulnerable, because as you know, it's very tight in that area. Small lots, very close to the, very limited right of way, access to truly come up with a plan to, to raise the roads and the bridges. So it is, it would require a comprehensive study and look at, but as, at this time, there's been no further advancement.
What do our people that have electric, electric cars, will, that affect their cars going through that water all the time?
I think, yeah, probably.
I don't, I don't have an electric car.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that's going to hinder, but anything.
Now you have electric buses going through there.
Yeah.
You know, you got that big contract, so.
Yep.
So nothing can be done at this point.
Nothing in the, the near term. I, you know, just to set your expectations, I wouldn't expect to see anything moving forward in the near term.
Okay. Where's my next, RTM or something? The engineer office? I'm willing to go to other places to get some satisfaction.
Sure, you're, I mean, you're always welcome to any of the meetings or, or public meetings. Often many of them have opportunity to have public comment. RTM meets once a month, and you're more than welcome to attend. If you, in lieu of going to a meeting, you want to just submit a letter and submit it to either my office or, and I'll, I'll forward it for you to the engineering office, or you could send it directly to the engineering office.
Okay.
All right?
Is the 146 project looking at, at all 146 or more down towards?
Well, 146 is looking at the whole, yeah.
Might be an outlet for him.
Yeah, but they're not going to go that far off, but yes. Yeah.
Nice to meet you all. My suggestion to Carl would be to look for tax abatement on his property since it's not worth the value that he's probably being assessed at, and since there are no plans to do anything about this, I would suggest to him that he just at least get some type of a tax abatement for it. Anybody else on that, on that street who's having problems with water should address that. In that manner, at least it's a temporary fix. I have a, that's just my comment in the past discussion you had. I have a question on to the registrar voter's salary. I see that you've increased the, or you've asked for an increase in the town budget 2% for all town employees. Is this correct? Non, non-union?
It was for the elected officials was 2%, correct?
2%.
For, for elected officials, it was 2.5% for non-union employees.
So the elected officials are getting less than the, than the non-union employees percentage was?
And full-time employees. The full-time employees are getting a 2.5, the guidance was a 2.5% increase.
So, and there's no, there's been no attempt to make an adjustment on the registrar's salary now that they are doing? Well, I, I calculate this year to be approximately 250 hours more work to do as a registrar just to cover, just to cover early voting. And if they're working based on a thousand hour, year, yearly rate, you know, they work a thousand hours a year, and you're paying them $31 an hour, that's 31 grand. And if they're increasing this by 25%, it seems to me that that would be an appropriate thing to address, just to be sure that you had some equity in the amount of work that is being required in the, you know, to pay them accordingly to the work that they're doing. You have any comment on that?
As you're aware, being a, the former registrar before you left your term, this discussion came up regarding what would be the impact of early voting, and what would be the impact, not only the registrar's office, but more specifically, what would be the impact with the required time commitment from the elected part-time registrars? And there was, it was still unknown. And actually, just as far recently, I think even when developing their budget from what was presented from the, the office of the current registrars, you know, they were still waiting for the final guidance, and they, it started getting developed through the process. So I think now, at least going to this next year, they have an idea in terms of what's required to have polls open, but I think it's still being, you know, what hasn't been, what is the required for the individual positions that you're speaking of. As you know, the elections are run through the registrar's office with a number of employees that help run the elections, moderators, deputy moderators, assistants, you know, poll checkers. And obviously, their compensation will be reflected about the time commitment that they need to pull that, pull that, right? Which, because I think you're now serving as. No, no, they get, they get additional, they, they get, it's not 2%.
2%, 2% increase in what they got last year, which was not increased from this year, I understand.
So, so you're, no, you're wrong.
Okay.
And as somebody who put the budget together, you should have known that, but maybe you missed it.
Well, I didn't put this, by the way, by the way, if you want to do this slide comment.
Excuse me.
What, what is it?
I have the floor.
No, no, wait a second.
Go ahead.
You, you, you make a comment and then you just let it there. I did not put this year's budget together. I put last year's budget together, and I've recorded that. And in fact, I have you saying in that, in that meeting, that you were going to address this issue when you knew for a fact that early voting was going to take place. Now you're wavering here, and you're waffling about this, and you're not really going to address this issue, just like you're not going to address the issue with the rising water problems and so many other issues that you don't address. Now, if you really want to get into the meat of this, let's talk about things that you haven't addressed.
No, we're going to address this.
Okay.
We're going to address this, Mr. Hall. You're going to come to every meeting.
Let's address this.
Okay. So we are currently in fiscal year 24. You were here, your term, you left midterm. When did you leave? June 30th, 2024?
2023.
2023, right. So you, in fact, the budget that we are, we're operating in this year, this fiscal year, is the meeting that you're speaking of. We're in the budget, we're in the fiscal year, the meeting that you're speaking, in my office, which you were part of putting together.
Right.
Okay?
Well, we are, we are speak, but we're speaking about this upcoming budget. We're speaking about this upcoming budget.
I'm get.
Right? So this is the 2024, 2025 budget. That's what I'm speaking about, right?
So you, you, you made a comment, you said, as far as I know, they didn't get an increase this year, they're going to a 2% increase next year. They got an increase.
Yeah, I'm talking about poll workers.
Okay.
Because you were talking about poll workers.
So.
They didn't get an increase from last year to this year in the poll workers. You can, go, go look at the numbers. And in fact, your HR person was in on this, and she refused to give an increase in that. And it's, it's going to be difficult getting people to work during elections. I spoke to several people during the early voting who are, who are going to New Haven because they get paid more.
Okay.
And they live in Branford. They'd be willing to work in Branford, but they say, why would I? I'm getting paid more in New Haven.
Okay, so you're, you're taking the 2%, which is the, the wage increase that would go on to, to hourly workers, their, their increase. The, the poll workers that you're talking about, so those are per diem, or they're paid by the day, right? For those tasks. You put in a list.
Yes.
You put a list together, right? It's per diem, they're not, they're not, the deputy registrar, the assistant registrars, they get paid, they were getting paid an hourly rate, correct?
As a town employee.
Correct, yes. So let's differentiate between. So, so those workers who are working additional days to do early voting, they're going to get paid for those days that they're working. So to say, to just, to say, to sit here and say 2%, no, the 2%, just like an employee who now, a part-time, who has to put in additional hours, they're going to get paid for those additional time. What you came to.
But it's not the same, but it's only.
Will you let me finish, please?
It's only at the rate.
All right.
It's only at that rate, right?
Okay. You're no longer.
We're talking about the rate, not the.
So when the registrars, excuse me.
Yeah.
Let's just leave it this. I heard your, your concern, if the registrars, who put their budget together, who present their budget, who presented to the RTM, want to, who, who put in their salary to the RTM and the Board of Finance and the RTM, they have the, the opportunity to request the, what they need to fulfill the obligation of holding the election. And that includes, includes the, what they need for staffing, as well as budgeting for the salary. What you're referencing too, and I see, the, when the RTM made, when they were considering making adjustments to, which they did make an adjustment to the registrars, correct? Last year, they made an adjustment to the registrar's salary. They, they made.
Went to 2%?
No, it wasn't the 2%. They went up to 31,000.
Yeah, that was two years ago.
So, so, yeah, when they did that, what I heard at that meeting, I'm not an RTM member, the RTM adopts the budget, and they, they approve the resolution that sets the salary of the registrars. What they said was, when, if early voting and there's an impact on the office of the registrars and the time commitment that they have, that would be, it could always be reconsidered at that time. Okay? So that's where this belongs. You want to come to this meeting and keep, you know, bringing up this issue? I'm not, I'm not denying that issue. You go, and again, but this isn't the venue. Selectmen Dunbar, Selectmen Higgins, and myself do not set the salary for those, those elected officials. We do not set them. The Board of Finance and RTM by resolution adopt those salaries. I will also just add, anytime when, in the past, when there was additional time commitment required by the registrars, the two elected part-time registrars, right? And there was additional time, a primary was coming in time, that's additional time. The elected registrars got paid above their, their salary that the Board of Finance and RTM approved. When you, you know, you made the case about the certification requirements that are required and maintain that, and those required classes to go to. Once you receive that certification, the, the town pays you a stipend or a, you know, stipend for those certifications. So I think in the past, the, the town has, the year when the primaries got moved because of the COVID year, right? There was, and there was a setting up the primary, then the governor's office by executive order moved the date. Remember that year? Do you remember that year?
Very, very well.
Okay, so that year, the, the registrars put in for additional compensation because of the time that they had to put in, in setting up the primary and rescheduling the primary and, right? They put in additional, and they received additional compensation. So it's disingenuous for you to come to the meeting and continue to say that you only get a 2% increase and it's, it's a flat 31,000, which once again, and, and this wasn't a decision, this by this board or my office. This was something that went through, the RTM a few years ago evaluated the compensation that the registrars received. Made a decision and made an adjustment based on the information that they, they, was presented, and also at that time made a statement. We can always look at it in the future when we know the impact on the, the positions for registrar due to early voting. That's what was stated on the floor of the RTM by the RTM members who were making the decision. So that's where we land.
It's not, I'm not being disingenuous because you also mentioned that in last year's budget meeting, that that would be, that you would address that. Because if I understand it correctly, the budget process starts with your office, does it not? Yes, yes or no? It's a yes or no answer. Does the budget process start with your office?
What do you mean by that? I would say no.
Well, then how does it start?
So each department puts together their budget and they respect it.
And then the first person that they meet in this whole process, it's a three-step process, right? First person, the first person they meet is you with the finance director and the personnel director. So personnel director is involved in this.
Right.
So here I'm, and this is what I'm saying to you. If there, if there's an increase of 25% of their workload, then that says to me that they are no longer in the part-time category of an employee. That's something that you should have been addressing, and we've mentioned this, it should be addressed by you. They are no, they are, they now are available for compensation in a, with benefits, because they are no longer in that category. And that state, and, and federal statute, I mean, it's, it's not something that you can just ignore and say, well, you know, I'm going to put that on the Board of Finance. You can't say that's on the, on the RTM. It's, that process starts at your office, and you have the director of human resources sitting there in this. So why that, why that has not followed through, I don't know. Maybe it's disingenuous on your part to suggest that it's all going to be left up to the RTM.
No.
The RTM doesn't, does, does not do the hiring and budgeting of personnel. Your office does. Indirectly maybe, but your office, you're auspicious.
Dan.
Yes.
I think what, you have to accept the fact that you are not the registrar. You, 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 you left your term, you quit. The registrars.
I retired, there's a difference.
Okay, you retired from a part-time elected position. I get that.
Right.
So the registrar.
I'm, I'm entitled to that.
Right, but the concern that you're bringing up, I think is appropriate for the registrars who, as I said, going back to that meeting, who stated, and I know Representative Everson was there, she's here today, and I recall that the RTM stated when they voted on that change would be when we, when the registrars come back and they truly, you know, the impact or have a, a further understanding of what the impact will be on their position, it's not just the office, it's the position, then it could, it would be reconsidered. So I'm not dismissing what you're saying. I'm saying, what I'm telling you, it is the, it is really, this is not the appropriate venue. The, the, the registrar's office and the two registrars really have, it's their, their responsibility, or, or I would say for them, to, to communicate what that additional time commitment or burden that is being placed on their, that position. It's for them to come for it, okay? And, and I would say, I welcome that.
As a citizen who is informed and knows, knows of this office and knows of the works and responsibility, you wouldn't think that I would, I should have some input into this? That's ludicrous. And not only that, but you have a, you have a registrar voter who does not do his job, has not done his job since day one, he's, he's reluctant to do his job, and now because he hit, he is not capable of doing this job, he's, you expect him to come up before the board and, and start advocating for this? He's on a free ride at $31,000 a year. Why would he want to change that? I wouldn't.
Yeah, I, I think your, your, your comments are totally aligned, and I'm not going to get into criticizing performances, but I will say.
You brought up the subject of, of the registrars presenting themselves.
No, no, Dan, you know where you're going.
You brought that up.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm saying that, the reason why is one of them won't, won't be able to do it.
So as somebody who was sat in that meeting that you talked, you mentioned, the meeting that takes place every year when the registrars come in and they present their budget, as well as what was submitted to the RTM Subcommittee, they were, the registrars, none of the registers were able to attend, it was the same day as early voting was taking place that night. It was a joint primaries, yeah, thank you, Representative Everson. So they were on it, however, a very thorough written explanation of their budget. I actually have probably in a long time since, you know, probably since Marianne Burkhart left, I think the, the registrar's office, I have a lot of confidence in them, the complete office in, in conducting a, an election and carrying out their duties. And that goes across the board for that office. So I think for you to come here and be critical of the, of the registrars, you have a right as a citizen, as a citizen, to come here and, and, you know, make your comments to the board. However, as I said, and I welcome the discussion, however, this is not the appropriate venue. We just said we don't have the oversight in terms of, of doing it, but I heard your, your concern. And my door is always welcome, is always open to the current, current officials who hold that office of registrars.
And I know your office is.
To hear the concern.
Your office is always open, and we've had discussions in your office, but it's not a public record.
Yeah.
So when that is not public record, then things, things get misunderstood, misrepresented, whatever, and now it comes back later and said, well, I never said that, or I meant something else, or, and I'm not saying just you, I'm saying that's, that's for anybody involved in a, in a discussion that's off the record. So you, when you keep saying that you're going, it's great to have these off the record, your office is always open, you know, if you really want to be more available, show up for a meeting every two weeks instead of once a month. For instance, you know, I mean, it's just, we, we've met three times this year, this is the fourth time that, that the Board of Selectmen has met, right? Fourth time. How, Ms. Higgins, how, Mrs. Higgins, how much money do you make a year in salary?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I really don't know exactly. It's direct deposit, I, I really don't know.
Okay.
Same as Selectmen Dunbar.
It probably is on, it's probably on the website. Did you get a raise? I didn't get a raise.
So it's about eight grand?
Is that what you said?
And, and, and as of, at the first three months of this year, you, as far as I can see, did an hour and nine minutes worth of work.
No, that's not true, sir.
So that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good pay.
That's not true. You're talking about Selectmen's meeting.
Yes.
We do, and I can speak for Ray as well, we do work outside of coming to a meeting.
Okay, can you explain to us what that is? Okay, can you explain to us what that is?
We, we, we go to meetings, we go to town hall, we, 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 Ray signs, signs off on the check runs, we represent the town at different functions, we read through all the literature and the correspondence, and we, we, we meet with people who want to meet with us to discuss their problems or their concerns, or maybe their suggestions. It's not, we just don't come to a Selectmen's meeting. And that's not the only thing we do. So you can't say that, you're saying eight thousand dollars a year, it comes to an hour and twenty minutes. That's the, the way that this is run. That's the way the.
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm just, I know that, I know that.
Nothing we could do about it.
It has been, I, I agree with you on that. It is, well, except maybe change the format of government, but nobody wants to touch the, nobody wants to touch the town charter. No, I understand that, I'm just saying that, so.
No, and in fairness, or, or just to correct the record, because I, you know, served as Selectman as well. Selectman Higgins is absolutely right, and I'm sure Selectman Dunbar would, would support that statement as well. You know, it's not just people calling the first Selectmen's office. People, you know, the community see the two Selectmen, as well as they're representative, they're part of the board. They don't, they may not attend a, a public meeting, but these people are, you know, receiving emails, phone calls, I'm sure if they go into the stores, or you're getting stopped. And so, so the work is not just the work that you see here. Okay? So to, to try to come to some, make a comment and, and frame it as, you know, that this, there's, the Selectmen are unduly enriched by, by.
No, no, no.
The level of compensation for the time.
I'm not saying that.
Well, that's what you, it came off of.
I didn't say that. I, I asked, I asked a question, made no comment on it, just asked a question, right?
I, I think you'll find that many department heads in this town will tell you how much I contact them about all agenda items. You know, I have pet peeves about some things, so before I get to this meeting, I don't have to air it out, I try to have the answers before I get here. I reach out, I speak to the majority leader, I talk to the minority leader on a regular basis, so, and I know you know this, so you, you've been around long enough to, to know it. So the statement was a little off. But there's many, many things that we do, as you're aware of, all the time. And, and we did it for nothing, we just happened to get, you know, compensated, you know, for some of the stuff. I think probably most of us would have done it anyway. But to say that, you know, just for the time of this meeting is just, that's ludicrous, and, and you know better, Dan. That's, I know you're trying to make a point, but the point, that, that point wasn't the one to make, because there's many people in this town that contact me and the rest of the Selectmen on a regular basis, and they don't always go to town hall. Where, where do people that bring it here? How many times I call Trista about things? It's, it's fairly well-known throughout the town, and, and they're easy to contact us. So there's a lot of time we put in, I enjoy putting the time in no matter what, I know everyone else does. But yeah, that little window of these meetings, these meetings are minute compared to what we do outside of here, and you know that.
I just wanted to have it on the record. Good, thank you.
Okay, any other business?
Listen to it, John.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.